We'll now call the city council regular meeting to order for May 23rd. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this evening. We just ask that you be with us tonight, Lord, as to grant us wisdom, Father. But we ask that your will be done here, Lord. Invite your Holy Spirit to give us wisdom tonight, Father, Jesus, and pray. But we just ask right now that you would help Jim Bernard tonight, Father. Just lead him and guide him, the entire meeting, Father, in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seated. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, here. Councilmember McCure, here. Councilmember Taylor, here. Deputy Mayor Bernard, here. Mayor Anderson, here. We have a corner.
First up, item number four, we have a proclamation for code enforcement officers appreciation week. I'll go ahead and read that now. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the community through the enforcement of buildings, zoning, housing, animal control, fire safety, environmental, and other codes and ordinance ordinances. And whereas code enforcement officers are often not credited for the jobs that they do in saving lives and improving neighborhoods. And whereas every day assisted by a support and program staff, they attempt to provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the community. And whereas too many times their effort goes unnoticed even after code compliance has been accomplished due to their efforts and expertise. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, highly responsible individuals who take their job seriously and are proud of their department and the local government within which they serve. And whereas the Florida Association of Code Enforcement, F A C E, has declared the first week of June to be set aside by local governments to honor and recognize their code enforcement officers. Now therefore, through the authority invested in me by the city council of Avon Park, Florida, I do hereby proclaim the week of June 6th through 10th, 2022, as code enforcement officers appreciation week. That's for you, Randy. That's for everyone.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve before.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion. We don't even need to vote on this, but we're gonna do it anyway. Because that's how much we appreciate our code enforcement. Now we don't. We have a motion. We have a motion. Second, we're gonna vote it out. You can please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McCure, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
That's how much we love you guys. All right, item number five, we have an event request, the Highlands County N double A C P Flag Day Celebration, May 30th. Veterans Affairs Liaison, Al Norton, see you here with us tonight.
He's on Zoom.
All right. Al, we hear you have an event. If you could please tell us about it.
I have two events, sir.
Yes, sir.
The first one is for May 30th. It's Memorial Day. And this one is many veterans who lost their fathers, their fathers, their cousins, their uncles while serving in their country. And we, we figure it's a great holiday to fellowship with other branches of the service. So we wanted to have just a little get together there on the 30th.
Okay. So it looks like the actual request from the city, we're not closing any roads. We are using a public park. But other than that, you're not actually requesting anything from the city. Is that correct?
Right. No, no rule closures or anything. No, sir. We have a little area. We call it South Side Veterans Gardens. And this is an area designed for veterans to have their get together.
Perfect. So the other event that you were saying, there's only one request here. So I'm assuming the other event is tied closely in with this one. Is that correct?
Yes, it's on June 11th. That's the Flag Day. So we're, we're observing that. Flag Day is actually on that Monday, on the 14th. But we are, we are observing it on the 11th.
And again, you're not actually requesting anything from the city for the Flag Day celebration either.
Right. No closures or anything, sir.
Perfect. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Ms. Gray, you'll need to turn your microphone on. Just push the button.
Okay, all right.
We got a brand new system. Yeah.
Okay.
If it's, if it's lit up, then it's on.
Okay, Brenda Gray, 410 East Lakeview Drive. Avon Park, Florida, sorry I'm late. I was trying to kill a snake at my house. Along with Mr. Norton's request, we are requesting some garbage cans because we have the bags. But we do need a couple of garbage cans for the event, for both events and the electricity so we can turn it in. Because we have a DJ coming in as well.
Okay, so May the 30th, is that during the week or is that on the weekend?
It's on a Monday. It's Memorial Day.
Okay. Does it?
And I think what they did last time, they showed one of us how to turn it on and then no, no staff is involved in it.
Okay. Staff see issue with that? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we just have the addition of cans and the electricity.
I have a question for Mr. Norton. Mr. Norton, how, how do you advertise and how do you contact the veterans?
Well, it does. So, well, I have a blast and I have a list of many veterans and their phone numbers. And I have, I get in touch with them over the blast. They all get the blast at the same time. And I tell them all the information. I've already sent information on Highlands County on to, it's Amy. She advertises in the paper. And I advertise in the churches, local churches in all of those areas.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
My motion to approve item number B five. Event quest Highlands County N double A C P Flag Day Celebration held on May 30th.
And?
And the, not only just the flag, but the, what was, what else was it, Mr. Norton?
June 11th.
Flag Day is on, only on, on June 11th and the other, the memorial is on May 30th. And the Memorial Day Celebration.
Okay. That's with the additional cans and electricity, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and seconds or further questions?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I noticed in here that you have care bags, quote unquote, care bags. Do you, do you discuss mental health for the veterans? Do you help them with their mental health?
Well, we have literature. I believe we have, you may have literature that we put out. But we don't have anyone coming in to talk about it.
So they can reach out to you for the mental health if need be and you'll direct them in the right spot?
Yes, Ms. Gray would give you more information.
Well, we have, we have partnered with the several, the agencies, mental health hygiene people in the area. And they, in the care bag, there's, there is some contact information. We like a referral agency that if they need help with like the VA in Seaborn, then we refer them to the, to that agency.
For the record, that was Brenda Gray.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McCure, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Up next, item number six, we have the event request, Avon Park J C's Fourth of July Fireworks Celebration. We have Mr. Turner on the sheet. Is anybody here from the J C's?
He said he was gonna try to make it.
Okay.
I just have a couple of comments on this, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
One comment I have is fairly important. It's, you know, we, we're only giving, if you give permission, approve this, we're only giving permission with regard to the ordinances of the city. Depending on whether this is a meandering or non-meandering lake is whether we have sole jurisdiction, any jurisdiction, or whether the state has total jurisdiction over it. And so that would be the one comment that they need to understand that they may need approval from the state if it's a state jurisdictional lake. That done.
It's a non-meandered, meaning the individual property owner is owned to the out end of the water.
Okay.
Does that mean that?
It means that might, might mean that they, that you need to get the approval from the owners, but.
Why, why is this something new? We've done this for years.
Because I've never, I've never had this approval in front of me.
I think what you're talking about is with closing the lake down, right? The jurisdiction actually shut the butt ramp and stopped other voters.
Right. We have, we have property on the lake and so on and that we have jurisdiction over it. But I understand from the picture that I see, it's gonna be shot off in the middle of the lake or close to the middle of the lake.
Yeah, which is what they've done for, you know, the past 10 or so years.
I'm not posing. I'm just simply informing you, you know, of that issue. The second issue would be, you know, and I don't want to be a killjoy here, but it's the litter aspect. I just rate that and I'll let you all determine that. Because I mean, there's no way that you can collect those things. They're gonna end up in the water.
Depending on which way the wind's blowing that night.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. All right.
So I see here that he's not requesting any road closures.
They, they're requesting the road closure for Main Street. And I was going to simply expand that. So in some prior years, they had actually, we normally closed down East Circle Street. It's not on the plan, but that's usually what's done. So I was just going to tell the staff that that needs to happen as well.
Yeah, I asked him because I was trying to get him to fill out the road closure form. And he said that he's not requesting the road closure. Just that, to be aware that there will be traffic at Donaldson Park.
I highly advise that we close the road down.
Same. I agree.
Yeah. It's a, it's a madhouse. So there needs to be, not only the road closed, but the staff to keep people from mobbing the surrounding property. It gets pretty insane. So you're forewarned. So as far as the, the request, obviously it doesn't have to be part of their request. We could do that independently. So would that be something that we would want to vote on after this or what? If we want to close down further roads, if the city wants to close down.
Yeah, you can always vote on that afterwards.
Okay.
We, okay, we, we, we just need no Main Street. Need to get hold of F that on that one.
Correct.
If you're gonna close down Main Street, that's not our.
Yeah, I'm gonna be bringing it up right after we approve this. But it's just not a part of their approvals. I don't want the words in their mouths. All right, does anyone have any more questions on the July 4th celebration? So keep in mind, they're requesting the date of July the 3rd, which is actually Sunday. July the 4th falls on a Monday. I just want everybody to be aware of that. And if there's no other questions, entertain a motion.
American motion to approve item number C six and the amount of $5,000 for J C's Fourth of July fireworks on July 3rd.
Okay, is there a second?
A second, yeah.
We have a motion and seconds. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McCure, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
All right, so like I was saying, closing the roads, closing the road to automotive traffic. So what you end up with is there's probably every bit of a couple of thousand people that usually attend this event and they're gonna be lined up on all the roads. Yes, they stick to sidewalks most of the time, but you know, people meander into the road. Having cars passing by is a, it's a bad idea because everybody's watching the fireworks or not watching the road. So pretty much in my opinion, I would say the roads all the way surrounding Lake Brunner should be closed to automotive traffic. And that would be my motion. Is there a second?
I agree and I second the safety reasons.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McCure, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number seven, we have the minutes from May the 9th. The city council regular meeting, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item number C seven, the minutes from May 9th, 2022.
Do we have a second?
I second them.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McCure, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number eight, we have resolution number 2022 dash 12 relating to the state revolving fund loan program.
So resolution, the city of Avon Park, Florida, relating to the state revolving fund loan program. Making findings, authorizing the loan application, authorizing the loan agreement, establishing placed revenues, designating authorized representatives, providing assurances, providing conflicts with severability and effective date.
All right, Melody, would you like to brief us on this?
Yes, so back in June 2019, the city applied for a clean water state revolving fund loan in the amount of $250,000 for the North End Water and Wastewater Extension for New Core for planning purposes. There was an oversight at the time as a resolution and a legal opinion should have been approved prior to getting loan. In 2021, staff with the assistance of Kim Lee Horn contacted D E P to reduce the loan to 50,000, half of which is forgiven under the new scope of wastewater treatment plan expansion plan. At the November 22nd, 2021, council meeting, council approved it. So in order to draw down funds on this loan, we need the resolution in place.
Okay. All right, so is there any questions on that?
I had some questions.
Go ahead.
She, as I read more into the notes, it said that, you may minute. We had to go back and borrow the 250,000?
No.
No?
We borrowed 50,000, half of which is forgiven.
Okay, I guess I'm confused. I'm reading the letter from Mrs. Teresa Robson. This to Miss Teresa Robson from Sykeson and Gilmore. Page 26. And dear Miss Robson, I'm duly appointed attorney, I am the duly appointed attorney. This is from Mr. Burke for the city of Avon Park. The city of Avon Park proposes to borrow 250,000.
Yep, it's been changed.
Sure.
Back when this was put in, like I said, just an oversight from who sent the F K and I thought we'd have to have a resolution on a lot of these. The city was asking for $250,000 for the Northern Extension Plan. By the time we received the grant, not only were the plans done, but pretty much everything's done. So we got the D E P and asked them if we could use it for a different scope. And instead of using 250,000, we only asked for 50, half of which, 25, we have to pay over the next 20 years. So because when we asked for 250, the letters have to say 250. We tried putting 50 in there and they said, no, you have to go over the original. Because really, you know, back date is definitely going on. So it's, the city's only going on 25,000 dollars. So it is, it can get a little confusing.
Yeah.
I wrote the best notes I could.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion. A motion to approve resolution number 2022 dash 12. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McCure, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number nine, resolution 2022 dash 13.
Resolution, the city council of Avon Park, Florida, provide for council approval of forms of T hangar leases, delegating city manager authority to approve unmodified form leases, approving rent increases to use with leases, and providing an effective date. So we basically have some forms of leases that they, that they use. And it's much cleaner. We have the city manager, if they're, if you improve the forms that are in the file, let's go ahead and approve these. And because we have a fixed lease form and we have a fixed lease amount now, which we, which you're just increasing. And so it made sense to everyone just to go ahead and do it that way rather than having to wait for meetings. Take, take up your time with it.
Okay, so we do have fam here. If we have any questions about the amounts or anything pertaining to the leases, we can probably get your questions answered. So is there any questions?
Up for the form, though.
Any questions to the amounts or anything? I guess you guys did a good job. Yeah, so you know, it's just, it's worth noting that the prices that I'm seeing here are not in line with the surrounding area. Yes, they are increasing, but it's not anything that is out of bounds from the Seaborn, Watch U Airport, or anything like that. Anything you guys care that? Yeah, it's a somewhat modest increase, particularly when inflation is taken into account.
And to add, one of the main reasons that they've been pushing me rightfully so to get this to you is they got people lined up to get hangers and at this price, they still think they're good deals, so.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue?
Well, I just think it's a, kind of explains the reason why the airports are always losing money. So it's time that we make some money for the city as well as for those people that are out there. So big increase, but I understand the reason behind it.
Okay, so we'll be looking for a motion for resolution 2022 dash 13.
Make a motion to approve item number D nine, resolution number 2022 dash 13.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further questions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire, yes. Councilmember McCure, yes. Councilmember Taylor, yes. Deputy Mayor Bernard, yes. Mayor Anderson, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. What's up? Thank you. All right, item number 10, we have resolution number 2022 dash 14, establishing criteria for consideration of foreclosure of the city lanes.
Resolution, the city council of Avon Park, Florida, providing for establishing criteria for consideration of foreclosure of city lanes and right up providing effective date. So it was brought up to me that the, you know, we, we probably need to have some kind of a part subjective, part objective criteria or determining who we're gonna foreclose on. So we don't just do it just willy nilly. And so I, I put this together, basically pulling this out of that proverbial dark space. Just for your consideration, you know, you don't need to pass it tonight. If you'd like to pass it tonight, that's fine. You can always tweak it later because it does say towards the end, this resolution is a non-binding assessment solely for the practical consideration, which properties it foreclosed will serve city goals, financial prudence, and legal expenditures and protection of public safety, health, and welfare. So if, if you decide, well, it doesn't show that we should foreclose this, but we think we should because of X. You know, maybe it's just a real eyesore in the community and needs to be done, then you can still do that. So, but I'm just trying to, to provide something that would help you make the decision as, as requested.
So as we move forward with, with other foreclosures, as you'll remember, we had tried to staff other attorneys to go after some of the properties that have been accumulating liens for a great length of time. If the economy takes a turn for the worse, it's probably going to be more properties that fall into disrepair. So I absolutely agree that we need some type of form for this. We need something to be structured so that, as Jerry said, we're not doing this willy nilly or that it would seem, you know, certain individuals were being cornered or anything like that. This definitely would keep it more fair and above board. So we can, I think, in general, I see absolutely no problem with it. The only thing that I would be open for discussion for would probably be the point system and how everything is weighted. Be interested to see what the council has to say about those issues.
I did put a few examples in there. I hope you had a chance to look those over. It's not obviously the whole world of possibilities, but you know, just to give you a few ideas. And I had, when I was making the examples up, I had to tweak the, the numbers and so on to make it fit. So it may be that we got to tweak the numbers in the future to make other circumstances fit the way that they should.
Sure.
I don't see an example with a repeat violator. Any, none of your examples have repeat violators on them. They're all violators. It's not multiple or repeat. Never mind. Yes, not. Are you saying the viola, in your example? Violator is not a multiple or repeat violator. What if they are?
If they are, then, then you should foreclose. I think, I think I said, I think I said that, but maybe I'm wrong.
So multiple or repeat offender, such offenders either have two or more properties under code enforcement or have been violated more than twice for the same offense or more than four times for different types of offenses, that would be plus seven points. So it doesn't have a specific example that includes one, but it does give you the point value for it.
Hard to get out of seven points.
Yeah.
Okay.
Obviously, that is the, the most grotesque of all the offenses, is someone who habitually does the same thing over and over again.
And like I said, I fully expect that, you know, if some of these don't fit, we'll just tweak the numbers and change it. It's just a resolution, so.
Yeah, and I don't think this is something that you're going to apply hundreds of times, something that you might apply, you know, a dozen times and then given council period. So we have time to work with it. Is there any other points anyone like to point out or questions?
So will we be getting an actual rubric like we do with our forgiveness of utility bills and things like that? Where we can actually go across and down.
Well, this is it.
Find it on the chart.
It's in the resolution itself. I didn't do an attachment to it, but they, you'll see the boxes contain the rubric for the, for this.
Yeah, so starting on page one, all of page two and part of page three is the rubric that he has. And that, that's kind of what we need to discuss. And do we want to tweak that? Because as Jerry said, he's trying his best to try to find something that applied to the most situations possible, but it's impossible to have a perfect system right at the gate, so.
I guess what I'm saying is it was, it would kind of be easier because all these are based on these examples. But if we just had a form, I'm, I'm thinking of when I'm grading a student's project and I go down each criteria. I'm like, okay, I'm gonna award two points, three points, four points. I go to the next criteria, one point, two point, three points. Well, not based on a specific example, but that can be generalized across all cases.
The example's not in there. It's just, it's just the example. It's just my staff comments with regard to, you know, here's how it works. And you know, this is one example how I, how it can be used. The rubrics themselves are numbered like that. So if you look up at page 75, it says like Homestead, no property as Homestead Protection shall be foreclosed, period. Then goes to third-party mortgage or other superior lien. And I, you know, city lien substantially exceeds market value, less mortgage, minus four points. And so that would be how you apply it and so on. And there's a few other points there. And the next one is city lien amount. So if you have a city lien, it's less than 10,000, it's minus seven points. You have one that's greater than 80,000, it's 10 points. Property value lien amount. So this is property value to lien amount ratio. And I have greater than five is 10 points. Ratio is less than point five, it's five points. And oddly, it goes down to zero in the middle and it has to go back up again on either end because it's a ratio.
Right.
But.
So as far as like substantial, moderate, and things like that, would that be based on Mr. LaBelle's opinion?
Yes.
Of enforcement. Would it have anything to do with the neighbor's complaint?
That would probably be the effect of, of his discussion because he's the one that gets those. And then, you know, but you can certainly bring him up and that would have some effect on it. But I was, I was planning on most of that, you know, substantial, moderate, slight, or none, being really from, from his perspective. But if you have, if you have outside comments that apply and are unreliable, then you know, go ahead and apply them to that section right there.
I would leave as much opinion out of it as possible.
Right.
So I think having one that is at the jurisdiction of the actual code enforcement officer would probably be the best way to go.
So I have some additional categories below that that don't have, you know, a multiple rubric, but we have multiple repeat offenders, as he mentioned, plus seven. Having seven or more months should, should commence foreclosure, five to seven should be considered for future foreclosure. After higher priority properties, properties with less than five points should wait until circumstances improve the point total. Or hopefully they come into. Or hopefully they come into compliance and pay their, their fines. So like I said, this is this non binding, you know, when we get them, we'll look them over and make changes necessary.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Anyone care to make a motion?
Um, I just have a question before anybody makes a motion, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
The multiple or repeat offender, are you going to put a time, let's see, such offenders more than twice for the same offense, more than four times, are you going to put a timeframe in there as far as, you know, within the past two years, four, six?
Well, the, the statute defines a repeat offender, one year.
One year.
I'm sorry, five years.
Okay.
Five years. Yeah. Isn't that right, Randy? Five years. So it's a five year period.
Okay.
Do we want to perhaps put that in that line, Adam? Just
if you'd like.
Future councils are aware.
Well, yeah, you can just go ahead and include that in your comment. I'll send it a fix.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Anyone in the audience care to speak? Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll go ahead and make a motion on D ten, resolution number twenty twenty two dash fourteen.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
With stated changes?
With that change.
Stated with those changes, yes.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing them, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number eleven is the first reading ordinance number oh eight dash twenty twenty two.
So ordinance of City of Avon Park four to provide for title for the ordinance and to, and the two thousand twenty two charter amendments, approving the form of charter amendments, approving the form of ballots for the election, approving the two thousand twenty two charter amendments, establishing an election date for approval of the two thousand twenty two charter amendments by electorate, providing for several billion provisions, provide conflicts, and provide effective days.
Okay. So as we spoke about at our last meeting, this would change the elections of Avon Park from a three year to a four year. This would actually make the elections coincide with the congressional and gubernatorial, as well as the presidential years for the council member and the mayor, as well as the three council seats that are open. I believe this is, it also includes the term limits.
Yes.
Two term limit. This would be, you can serve two terms as council, as well as two terms as mayor. Before you would be have a mandatory break period there. Obviously, we talked about a lot of benefits last time. I believe those benefits will hold true. I think this will encourage a whole lot more people to actually get involved because there's guaranteed end dates. This would also help keep the council members and mayor positioned to understand that their time is limited here. This is not a place to take up residency. You're here to take care of the business of the electors of Avon Park and then step down. I think ultimately it's the best way to go for the city. It's going to give us a whole lot more participation in the elections as well because of the years that coincide in. So I strongly support it. Any questions?
I agree with that also. And of course, this will go on the election and ballot for the city, for the residents, the voters in November. And it will take effective on, if it's voted yes on that day for.
Right. It has to be voted on by the electors of Avon Park. This is not us putting this into law. The actual voters will do that.
That being said, I go ahead and make a motion. We approve I have number D eleven ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty two.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number twelve, we have the American Rescue Plan update. Melody?
Yeah, so just as a refresher, in March of twenty twenty one, the US Treasury awarded the city of Avon Park three point six million dollars in American Rescue Plan funds. We have received one point eight million. We are due to receive the remaining eight point one, I mean, one point eight million in July of this year. And the funds are to be used by December of twenty twenty four. In November of twenty twenty one, the US Treasury passed the interim final ruling, which depicted the things that the city can and cannot use the funding. Specifically, we had to go by the drinking water and clean water state revolving funds projects that were eligible. In January of twenty twenty two, the US Treasury passed the final ruling in which they determined that any municipality can take a revenue loss of ten million dollars. And it's not, you make one report that you require that ten million dollar loss, ten million or under, and there's no reporting. And the city can use it on any general government expense that we would have. The only restriction they put on it is pension.
Okay. So at this point in time, do you see any issue expending all those funds?
No.
Okay.
No. And we will still track it for audit purposes, but we do not have to report back to the treasury.
Okay.
And you know, we have the eight hundred ninety five for the headworks project. We have a fifty five for the wastewater master plan. So we're tracking all those funds, but we do not have to report back to the treasury.
Okay. We have any questions for Melody on that?
I like it. Also, just so you know, Melly did reach out to our outside CPA who backed all this up.
Okay. Obviously, this is just an update. You're not looking for anything from the council.
No.
Okay. Once again, is there any questions for Melody on this?
No.
Seeing none, move on to city manager updates.
You got two add-ons, Mayor, with Jerry. Do you want to handle that?
Yeah. We can go to add-ons now. Jerry, you want to, which one? You want to start with Walgreens or?
Let's start the road jurisdiction.
Okay.
So as you, as we've mentioned before, the county is upset because when we do annexations in the past, we have not annexed the streets, which we can't annex them without the permission, voluntary permission of the county. That's a quirk, which I'm going to talk about and how we can fix that. But this is the annex South Lake Boulevard and there's a map attached at for that. And the county no longer wants to maintain that. They were going to abandon it, but we can't abandon it.
Okay. You want to
Yeah.
Mark out that road there for us, Mark?
Yeah, actually, in your handout, on the second one, the, the clean one in the back, you can see the one at CFRPC did, actually did for us this morning.
I see it there. Okay. So this includes the road that was talked about. The there was a couple citizens had mentioned a subdivision or wondering was there a road that we were closing or something like that. This is the road, portion of the road that they were referencing. And what this is talking about is just the taking it from the county into the city. So we've annexed a great deal of property over there of years. They want us to actually take this road into the city's hands. At that point, then, we could talk about whatever we wish to do with this road in the future.
Right. And the, the county has expanded that from what? If you look at the bottom part, straight off the lake there, that's what we first were talking about. Now they're wishing for us to take all the way to Hell McRae. Some of that's already in the middle of the city jurisdiction that the horizontal lines there, wherever lines we want to call those are actually the city.
Right.
And then actually Lacy Hills is its called there. The part that isn't in the city is an enclave. So as I mentioned before, they're after us for that.
Yep, I'm going to talk about that in a second.
Yeah. So it's worth noting that from Garrett Road up to West Hell McRae Boulevard there, all of that is actually paved. That's something that probably most of us would assume was already in the city. So that's not really anything odd. The, from Garrett Road over to the Marble Avenue, that's the unpaid portion that is going to require the large amount of maintenance. So if any of you have driven out there, that's what you're looking at. So there's not really much of a complication here. My only reserve, I don't know that we really have a choice here, but if we're not going to do something with that road, you know, I don't think that we should take that road. So obviously, the county's not saying it's here. If you want it, they're saying, take it or else, kind of is the opinion.
So and they do have some control over that, which is from a legal standpoint, it's better that if you take it than not.
Yeah.
And I would highly recommend that you take, take the road, at least for a period of time.
Better to take it than have it forced upon you.
Well, yeah. Actually, it's better to, to take it rather than have them abandon it.
I see.
And which case, you know, we would have legal issues associated with that.
Okay. So this seems pretty cut and dry. Any questions on this?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
When you say, Mr. Burr, when you say it better for us to take it than have the city to abandon, what part of your
County abandon.
County to, and what part, from Garrett around the lake or from Garrett to Hell McRae?
Whether from Garrett to around the lake, around the lake, first part that you, that the city manager was talking about. That's the part that is pivotal to, it's an unfinished road.
Well, they pretty much done that already, right? Abandon it.
No, they, they actually maintain it still.
They did for a short time till I got ahold of them. They went back out there and graded it.
Yep.
But once we take it over, they'll stop grading.
As I said, we don't really have too much of a choice in this matter. What comes after is where the city really has a choice.
Variety reasons I prefer not to discuss it probably. So.
Okay. So anyone care to make a motion or do we have further questions? Do I hear a motion?
What's the to the end of that, the back of that, sort of the map? Make a motion that we transfer to right away from Garrett Road to the extent of Marble Avenue to the city. Does that count?
So it would be the actual from Marble Avenue all the way to West Hell McRae Boulevard, correct?
Well, you, the, all in Hell McRae is a whole, whole part.
Okay.
You have the whole portion shown.
I got the whole red, okay.
The, the red line identified and exhibit A.
Yeah, I'll change my motion from Marble to Hell McRae, West Hell McRae Boulevard.
Okay. This is a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We have further questions. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment before going the next add-on item that I I'm working on a an interlocal agreement between us and the county. Basically, what it is, it's an invitation by us to the county and Sebring to discuss boundaries, both for water and sewer and for future annexation. And that will include how roads will be handled, annex, annexations and so on. So we don't have to do this in the future. We annex an area that includes a county road. We get the county road along with it. The county, I'm sure, won't object to that. But we, you know, we'll have to discuss, obviously, you'll be involved in this, what, what what, what the territory is going to be, but it just makes imminent sense. Because you're doing a master plan now for water and sewer. What are you going to base that master plan on? How far are you going to run pipe? Do you run a twelve inch pipe that you may only need a six inch pipe to certain areas and other areas, just the opposite? So it just makes a lot of sense. I brought this up to a previous city manager and it was totally panned because one, all kinds of annexations. And annexations are a fine thing, but you know, you really need to have some kind of a plan because we're so close now to Sebring. And the county is, you know, I think rightfully upset about, you know, some of the annexations and so on have occurred. So that's what I plan to do and that'll get everybody together. There might be others that go in. I think districts are allowed to participate. They can ask to participate in it. I don't know that you'll have any conflict with your, your district. What's the name of it?
Sun and Lakes.
Thank you, Sun Lakes. But you know, any rate, it'll be really the, an invitation to Sebring and the county to sit down and discuss this. And in that way, we can, you know, nobody can say, well, we don't want you to do that, that area.
And if successful, it will essentially give us what the eventual dimensions of Avon Park will be.
Right.
Okay. You don't need a motion for that?
No, I just, I'll, once we, I get it together, it's actually a unilateral thing right now. We prove it as in your local agreement when I get it done. And then we send it to the county and they have a certain amount of time to respond. And the city had, Sebring has a certain amount of time to respond.
Okay.
If they don't want to negotiate, then that, that's the end of it. But it's a, it's a formal invitation to discuss it.
Very good. I think that will help us out with our annexations in the future. That way us, Sebring and the county are all on the same page.
Yeah, I, I did a little bit of research on it and I found just easily twenty or thirty of those out there, you know, just in the state of Florida. So I think it's a good idea.
Very good. Any questions on that? Seeing none. Jerry, Walgreens issue?
Yeah, so I, I talked with the city manager and the mayor a long while ago about this lawsuit that was being proposed by the, the state through the attorney general. Having to do COVID, apparently they've got a settlement with Walgreens. Don't know what's going to happen in the future, but with the others, but it's, it's a decent amount of money for the city and the county. It's a good idea to approve it. And they were, they're asking for our approval of the settlement. If we don't approve the settlement, then probably we're pretty much out of luck.
Okay.
But they fortunately, I just sent this over to the clerk's office and the city manager puts work into it, which shows you the amount and what, what it can be used for. Because it can't be used for anything. It's not just money in our pocket. It's money that's supposed to go towards opiate, you know, opioid limitations and treatment and so on. So that has those things in there. If you want to consider it till the next meeting, that's fine. But I felt like you need to get it as soon as possible so we can let the state know as soon as possible if we can do it, finish, approve it tonight.
So, Mr. Burr, exactly what fund would it go?
It would, it would be a separate fund, separate for, for purpose, just like our grants are. It has to be used for these reasons. So you set it aside in a separate account. They have, accountants have a name, name for it, which escapes me right now, but it's a separate account that can't be touched for any reason other than what the stated use is for.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can you explain a while how they determine the amount that the county and the cities get?
No, I can't explain, actually. But it's based on your size.
Well, I thought Avon Park was larger than
Go ahead. You got.
Yeah, I was kind of trying to look that up. I knew it would come up. I want to know too, but it's like a hundred and almost seventy pages long. They came up with a formula. It's probably fifteen numbers long. We were point oh two something. Sebring was point oh three something. So I really can't answer it, but population was one thing, but there was other things in there too. But like I said, it was too long to try to digest and give you a complete answer. But there was there's a breakdown of every, you know, it's like we put in, as you remember, when you gave the authority and the the mayor signed two or three things so far on it, there's cities in there and counties in there that weren't listed. So they didn't, they didn't jump in on it. But I did look at, there was some cities that looked bigger than us that got less money. There were some small ones that got more. So it's, it must be a bigger formula than just
It's got to have something to do with the amount of offenses, wouldn't you say? Probably the amount of prescriptions written for certain drugs.
Probably, probably how many Walgreens are within so many miles or wherever.
Right.
Yeah.
So it was late past, not listed?
No.
That's right. We only have one Walgreens.
It's a, it's kind of a take it or get nothing situation. So.
And as you see, I, I just this one that I cut and pasted off from there, the, the ones they listed, all the cities and counties, you got, you know, these are ones that appear to be pending and how much if we get them and guess CBS and the other three are pharmaceutical manufacturers. Yeah, I did look, Jerry. I know you did it. And it's eighteen years and the first payout is almost ninety five and a half million. And then for seventeen more years is almost, is about thirty four and a half million.
No, and I appreciate, I appreciate you doing more work on it. I did because I was talking on the other side. agenda. So I appreciate that.
I see the part of it is to address the need of criminal justice involved persons, obviously, i.e. law enforcement.
So also fire for Also fire first responders also.
So perhaps uh.
Could maybe you.
Some of it could be used there, okay. All right, do we have a motion?
We need that.
The motion to approve so the mayor can sign it, settlement agreement.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is that it for your items, Jerry?
Jerry, do you have an update on that forfeiture and the homestead?
Oh, uh, right, right, the um, the property that we talked about that um we want to try and foreclose, if not, we're going to go for injunction. Uh, turns out the research shows that um. Uh, a plausible argument that there's homestead associated with it, so I don't want you guys to have to expend the money for going to foreclosure and then we get down to the eleventh hour and it can't foreclose. And so um we're going to go ahead, uh, with your permission to proceed to injunction, which I think you gave permission.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you said there is a homestead on it?
Yes, it's not the, the homestead you were talking about with regard to homestead exemption on, on, this is, this is a, a homestead associated with uh protection from lawsuits on leads. It's that there's two types of the constitution, that's, so um we're, I, I think that, if I'm, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we already voted on. In the injunction, but if you would just go ahead and prove it, going forward with the injunction on this, if you would, for us to do that.
Jerry, uh, just real quick, if the injunction is successful, what is the, what does it actually do for the city?
Uh, well, it depends on what the judge rules, you know, because the judge could say, okay, Alan, in, but in violation, I'll issue an injunction. And then um the person doesn't do anything, but um, you know, then at some point, you know, bring him back in and so on and, and the judge will, will, will keep jurisdiction on the case. You know, to ensure that they comply, at some point, the judge will uh consider it a um sanctions and um sanctions could include going to jail.
Do the sanctions ever include removal of the homestead exemption?
No.
Wha- what was that answer?
No, because that's a constitutional issue, he has no jurisdiction over changing the constitution.
Is everyone clear on exactly what we're voting on here?
Now, obviously, there's no promise that he'll throw him in jail, but at some point, it's going to be such an offense to the judge that they generally do.
Okay.
So then he gets thrown in jail, example, example only, um, he gets tossed in jail, he gets out and the house continues to sit there?
And you'll go through the same thing again, I mean, it's.
So over and over and over, he gets thrown in jail and bails out and we still have a problem.
That's state, that's the way state law is right now, unfortunately for it, for it, well, fortunately in circum- circumstances and unfortunately, you know, there's, Florida is a, a, a um. A huge property rights states, state and um homestead is very strong in Florida.
So just so we're clear, basically, the uh, the homestead exemption came into play because a uh prior family member had the homestead in place and it was handed down to him.
Right, and as a um, as a, a person that would take as an heir, it doesn't matter whether they've taken title or not. The fact that they are an heir that is subject to receiving the property, um, then it gives them the opportunity to claim homestead.
Which is why a lot of the properties uh could continue to be in dis- disrepair, disarray and just get handed down generation after generation, generation, so.
Right, and I wish there was more we could do and it comes up in the legislature periodically, but they don't ever change it.
I see, okay.
It's only recently that that house got a homestead. That, that house was in um the deceased owner's names up until recently.
But, but it doesn't really matter whether it's a deceased name, if there's an heir to the deceased, then um and living in the property as their sole residence, then. It's, you know, it attaches.
And he is an heir, we know that for sure, he's an heir.
Well, even under intestate um um statutes, he would be an heir as a son, as I understand it, okay.
So, Mr. Burr, I got a question, so I can understand. When a deceased die and they leave an heir behind, the homestead transfer to the heir?
Not necessarily transfers, but because it's not like something you have to apply for, like your tax homestead exemption, okay? It's just by, it's operate by, under the constitution, basically the verbiage of the constitution and, and um the research that was done. Shows that it operates to, to, it reinitiates immediately when the other person's living there, if the other person dies, so there's no pause in it. Now, if, you know, um, there's other circumstances that can, where they can lose, uh, but I prefer not to discuss it.
I see. There's benefits to living with your mother. So it looks to me like this is probably the best option that the city has, um, it's not really the one that we were looking for, but it's what we have, so. If we want to move forward with trying to do something with this property, this is probably the only option, so do we have a motion to move forward?
I'll make a motion and move forward with it. I, I don't know what the verbiage is I'm supposed to use.
It's injunction, injunction.
Move forward with the injunction.
I make a motion and move forward with the injunction.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, the question, remember?
Yeah, I remember, I'm asking, is there anything else for the attorney updates or anything?
Nope, no more, I got a disc- quick couple. Um, families here, so I won't bring too much up, other than it's going real good to those guys, um, the AIP due diligence grant, we're still due diligently working with FAA. Melly got him some stuff today, um, so it's moving forward, at a fast pace, not really, but that's the FAA.
So uh on that, I understood that we were uh potentially getting a grant that would cover the cost.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, that the AIP due diligence grant, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to get DC to talk to Orlando, what we've been trying to do, but we think we made a little headway. I did have to use Lowell, so we'll get a little more there, but um I had to use him the other day to make a point to our local people, so.
Okay.
So uh, all the forms and grants are all filled out for the AIPP, you're just waiting on pervo?
No. Um, I'll put it this way, DC says there's money there, local says, well, there might not be, well, yeah, DC, well, maybe when they get with DC. Now he's going to get with his boss in Atlanta, but by the time we got off the Zoom call, it ended better than it started. So we're moving forward, but Lowell was very helpful for us on that.
Okay. Okay.
Um, just, I'd ask Rick, because he couldn't be here tonight, about, because we haven't given you any update on our state inmates working out wastewater treatment plant. Couldn't be any better, um, they have four guys, they come, two of them come for three weeks and they rotate, two more guys, then they, the other two rotate. All four of them are certified water wastewater operators. They mechanically inclined to doing oil changes, greasing, changing belts, the other day they had them, I got a complaint on um one of our neighbors, we border a fence. We let stuff grow up, they cut it down, they're mowing, I asked Rick, so basically we got two more guys, he goes, oh, and we got more than two guys, who work better than two guys. They don't even want to take lunch, they eat on the way going back, so um he couldn't speak highly enough of them, great guys, no problem. Tenant stops by once a week just to see what's going on.
Did, did they start out as certified?
Yes, they actually have their own plan out there, they've become certified and they'll, if one of these guys get out, they'll be looking for jobs or. They told us a guy that's, I think he's got his class B and they said, don't look to hire him too soon because he's got another year or something like that. But um Rick said these guys are phenomenal, these are great guys. You did get the approval for them to work the wastewater treatment plant, Rick would like to also use them with water plants to help mow and clean and all that stuff. I don't see a problem with it, they're going to be riding in the truck with one of our employees, so if you're good with that.
Does council have any objection?
What is the water plant?
We have several of them around the city.
This will be where the water wells are, so we have, uh, I believe. No, they're.
Down on twenty-seven?
They're all throughout the city, you got one on Bell Street, that's the one that just got rehabbed.
Right, you got Avon Park Lake, you got one down and um, that Sun Lakes across.
Crystal Lake.
Crystal Lake is one.
You also got uh River Greens, right?
Right.
Yep, so there's, there's probably five to six.
Yeah, at least. Which all have maintenance issues, mowing, trimming.
Yeah.
Mechanical stuff.
I have no problem, but I think it's great, it's useful.
Any other questions or comments on that?
Um, are they, they're going to be riding around with the employees, you said?
Well, yeah, they'll be riding in the truck and their employees' truck.
And those employees have gone through the training also?
The only, the, though, there's, they'll be the same, the employees that work the wastewater treatment plant, they do both, they do water and wastewater, so they're both ways. There might be all three of them out there during the day, then one goes off when he gets a job to do it, one of the, the water plants.
Were you talking about water wastewater training or were you talking about the share?
The, the only ones these inmates are with are the ones that have gone through the training out at APCI and we have another class coming up, more to go through it.
That, that was your question.
We wouldn't allow them with anybody that hasn't been trained.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? You looking for a motion?
I'm making a motion, we move forward with the inmates uh working in the water treatment fence as well as uh, uh, with the other locations.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mark?
That's it.
All right, we do have one sign up who's been waiting very patiently since before the meeting started.
Leave the mic.
We get that portable mic to him. This is Eric Weisong, he's at four twelve North Lake Avenue, Avon Park. What can we do for Eric?
Well, I mean, um, I take a lot of medication and my wife just had a heart attack and I just had cancer surgery. I mean, it's pretty bad up there, it's like Indiana for five hundred. I mean, just right before we come over, Jeep Liberty must have been seventy or eighty pass, car is down and us backing out of the driveway, okay? I mean, I know that nothing can be done about. He was with, I mean, they say that music is so loud and it's going so fast that the cows will have to go out in the road, he's dead. I mean, that would be sad, that would be good. So, you just get, get wrong, going, you know, you get. So, I mean, the hot rod and I can tell you the color. I mean, I can hear it from twenty-seven down range.
So you got a couple of problems there, one was the loud music, uh, we do have. Well, well, there is something to be done if it's after.
She wears a hundred thousand dollar unit, that face used after I hurt her head nuts. And I want medication and that's looking asleep or I'm up there taking a shower all night.
Okay.
These guys rattle my windows.
Okay.
And loud bikes, and I mean, there's no chance in the bed, if they want loud bikes, I'm going back to the bank, get my chair right off the driveway and start.
Right.
So, you know, I'm not that way, I say it wrong every day and all day long, because lately, let's say. I know exactly the day.
It's seven oh five.
Okay. I, I'm assuming that you've reported it to the sheriff's department?
I have.
Recently?
Uh, same one, Michelle Dorsey.
What, in the last year, have you?
Yeah.
Okay.
One suggestion, there, I've been telling, they do a little bit more control down on the side of the, there's a big back street.
Okay.
My other suggestion is three and P L I, to where the side of the line, the three and P is good, there are three ways, there is no time.
Okay.
Mayor, can I add to that?
Yep.
We actually, I asked them a few weeks ago, we're getting quotes to restrike North Lake because there's no stripes even left in there.
Okay, and Mark, while you're at it, uh, we do have a noise ordinance that after nine PM. So, okay. All right, so the noise ordinance, uh, obviously after nine PM, we don't, uh, hold on, sir, Eric, if you hold on one sec. So the noise ordinance after nine PM, we do, that's handled by the sheriff's department, right?
Correct.
So if it's reported, then they make a call, they go out there, they speak to the loud individuals, so.
But they, it's in cars.
Yeah, moving cars, Florida statute, you know, you can do it by, as long as the vehicles are moving, it's on the sheriff, sheriff department website, I just read it two days ago. As long as that vehicle is moving, even after nine PM.
I see.
So, you know.
Okay.
Uh, you know, it's no same thing, like I said, I, I gotta go find, get the car.
Got it.
Let, let, let.
Why would I want to do that?
All right, Eric, we, we've heard you loud and clear, we appreciate your comments, sir. Okay.
I laid out brush. And I don't dig very much into towns, although I'm in that search.
Okay.
I put two pieces of wood out there, three foot long. Okay, the rock, I laid it on top of the brush that I took, pulled down out of the tree.
Yes.
He takes it out of the brush, bros it out there and then it's, I said, hey, that's wood too. He said, that's not brush. I said, it's wood and a rock, it's only this long.
Yeah.
You know.
So only brush can be taken to the brush pile is the problem.
Well, I've got, I, right now, I've got brush lined all in front of my house, I got it all set just for him.
Yep, but you understand, we can't take wood to the brush pile, that's the. Okay, I got you. Anything else?
And I had a neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
In my driveway. He's there for three, four days, I tell him, I have to use this order, I have a lot to do, so I put an airbag on, but we had to go, you want the airbag? Well, I get a letter in saying, saying I'm going to get charged, we're just pressing, they're trying to help out somebody. My driveway is blocked, and my driveway blocked me, me and my.
Got it.
I'm just trying to help the guy, but it's a complaint about commercial vehicles in here. What about all the lawn mower? Everybody's yard considered commercial.
Okay.
And there's two trucks and trailers sitting across where you're building up that back well, sitting right in there, fully loaded, every day.
Got it.
Thank you.
Very good.
Good talk, good talk.
Mayor, I'd like to clarify on the uh, the, the vehicle, moving vehicle, if it's stationary on a property, then you, it's in violation with the loud music. But as long as it's moving, nothing you can do, per the share.
I've heard that before and, and I don't necessarily agree with that, that legal conclusion, a lot of it's based on this, a city of Sarasota case where they um, um. Or loud boombox music coming from a car and uh they, they violated them and um, but it turned out that the court found it to be open, there's, their ordinance to be overbroad. And the reason they found it overbroad is because they allowed ice cream trucks to go around and play music and um they would, and, and they said, well, you, if you're going to allow that. You know, and there's a few other instances of what they did, then you have to allow this, otherwise you're, you're, you know, it's inappropriate. So it's just a matter of what your ordinance looks like and, but, but uh, you know, things could have changed, though I haven't looked at it in five or six years, but that's, that's the last I remember about that.
That, I read it on, I was surprised too, I just read it about two days ago on the sheriff's department website, I guess there was a lot of people calling down to complain and so I guess they wanted to put it out there for the public to see.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Um, as far as the garbage that he's speaking of, um, I, I've seen, we've had a lot of garbage hanging around on the edges of the streets. I don't know if it's because I are understaffed in that department, I don't know, but there's been garbage sitting on the side street a long time on some of the streets.
I don't, what kind of garbage are you talking about?
Well, it's all kind.
Well, it's all kinds, it's garbage, and then I've drove up on Ed Miracle Street, I see construction garbage, um, there's brush, there's mattresses, I've I've.
Right.
I I don't know if people know the proper channels to take to report that there's garbage out in front of their yard. Um, I think they just let it sit there and it just sits there and sits there and sits there.
Actually, I asked um, Randy LaBelle to get with the sanitation supervisor, because we've got to come up with recommending different ordinance, because they, any, a lot of people in the city just throw anything they want out. I think the city's supposed to pick it up, and it's ridiculous.
Right, and the city does it.
In the picture Randy is showing me, and I said, you keep taking pictures, because when council sees this, that's what they want, their their solid waste employees doing is twenty-four seven running around picking it up. You know, it's like, I can only speak for myself, when I do, did stuff at my house, I I rented a roll-off dumpster, I paid for it, and these people take out. They're knocking down insides of houses and construction debris and throwing it out on the side road thinking it's the cities is supposed to pick it up and know the city isn't.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
And it's really getting ridiculous, now, did we get behind on some brush, yes, but a lot of people took that into, oh, let's see, we had a storm, so now I can cut down my trees and lay them out here, so. We did have a couple of guys down, so the the clam drivers were having to ride back the truck or 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 uh, the uh, front end um, front end dump. And um, so I can't say it's on our guys, they're out here busting their butt, it's just there's so much stuff out here, when people throw the mattress out on the side road and think the city's supposed to pick it up.
Right, and and I'm not, I'm not criticizing anyone, I'm saying we have to come up with a different solution, because there is a lot of garbage that gets dropped out, a lot.
There is, and there's a ton of garbage that we pick up.
Yes, and.
I don't think they know the rules, I really don't think the residents know the rules.
Maybe, but I I think some don't care what the rules are.
Exactly, I agree.
Yeah, sir, you you can't, you can't make comments if you're not in the microphone.
But it it's something that we're looking into, especially, you know, you've authorized us to buy the truck that one driver to fix your garbage can up, and we're gonna have people complaining, well, you didn't pick up my pile next to it, well, next week, put it in your garbage can. But, you know, I get these calls too, that and get with Anthony, a lot of time, people say, it's been there for three weeks, Anthony approved, no, it hasn't done. Now, is there some, yes, go up in it, where I live in Avon Park Lakes, there's still piles of brush that's sitting up there, and it's gonna sit there, because they don't have clam trucks, you don't tie it up at four foot, that, then not get picked up, so. I see, yes, you can see, one way you can say a problem, the other way I see the other problem, people for years just been allowed to throw anything they want out there, we did get. The one big one we had, we did end up, the sheriff's office arresting the guy and got a lot of charges on him, right, Randy? That this individual thought he could clear out the whole house, including the kitchen sink, by the way, well, we called the sheriff's office, ended up getting a warrant, putting the guy in the jail, because it's getting ridiculous.
But I'll just say, the uh, the garbage guys, um, from what I've seen, whether it be the trash, brush, and the actual garbage, most of them that I've seen go above and beyond, they probably do a lot more than they probably should.
They do.
You know, I see, I routinely see people moving out of houses and they basically throw away everything they don't want, which is half the furniture, half the clothes, you know, some drywall, you name it, it's out there, and and a lot of times they they pick it up, pick it all up.
Yep.
So there's that, also, uh, people generally don't care about rules, uh, half the population follow the rules, half the population don't follow the rules, that's just the name of the game, that's always gonna be the deal, the only way to fix those people is with ramifications. I think that we have a good system, I don't think anyone should be offended from uh, you know, complaining or pointing out garbage piles without feedback from the general population, there's no way that. A city manager or a uh, public works supervisor is ever gonna know the full story unless people help out and point out where the piles are, so by all means, if there's a problem that you see with garbage, brush, whatever, point it out to city hall, they need that information, they need that feedback, so.
Also, the public needs to know, the residents need to know also that there's channels and there's procedures to having your garbage picked up.
Yep.
And they are, and then when we go tell them they're gonna get an extra charge, they get upset, because they think we should just come every day and pick all the garbage up.
Well, I like to say. I think it's an issue, I've already addressed it with Mark, Mark, let me speak to Anthony. There are piles that's laying around the city three and four weeks, and Anthony said, no, there's not, I say, yes, it is, I don't have a reason to lie to you. My point I'm making is, it doesn't make the city look good at all, and I told Anthony, God, if I can get this picked up for the holidays, you know, you got families coming home, this is where they grew up at, they wanna. They wanna see a, you know, nice city, they driving through the city and you see piles of. One lady told me it should be named, Avon Park should be renamed to the city of, I don't, not gonna even tell you. I see a problem, I've discussed it with Mark already, I think maybe this council should get together and come up with something, we got to come up with something because. When it rain, it all depends on what they put out there on that road, some of it gets smelly.
I agree.
It's awful.
Yes, I agree.
It's awful, I see us putting this money into these houses, trying to beautify these houses, but you got trash sitting on the side of the road, you can't even see the the city, you just see junk.
Well, and not only that, but now it's coming up to hurricane season, now these are gonna be um, you know, scattered everywhere, all garbage.
Can CRA funds be used to clean up trash in Avon Park?
I highly doubt it, no.
I I don't believe so, so.
Bricks and mortar.
Yeah. Right now, we we run a route twice a week, county runs it once a week, so we're already running it too. Anthony and Rick are supposed to come up, when Anthony doesn't have to drive a truck again in the back, but come up with a plan, because right now we work four days, week tens, I want to go to eight weeks, correct, or eight weeks. Eight hours a week, five days a week, um, so he's looking at that, but I can, I'm not gonna sugarcoat anything, the biggest problem is, is all this stuff that the citizen put out there, and Randy will back that up. And he's gonna get a lot of pictures, because when we come to you and tell you, we gotta get some some teeth in our ordinance and what you can put out there and what you can't put out there, you're gonna say, people put stuff like that out, because. Sorry, but the average person just doesn't throw stuff out from their their house that I don't want anymore and just throw it out there, and that's what they're doing, and there's some piles, there's one right behind this building here. I think every other week, there's a couch and chair out there from the same house.
That's what I was gonna say, I've seen oftentimes where the brush truck comes by, they pick up a big, huge pile, literally, within an hour, there's another pile.
Right, and actually, we got a guy last year, because I gave him, told him who it was, because he didn't live far from me, who was cutting trees down in in Avon Park Lakes. And bringing them and dumping in the city, because he knew the city will pick them up.
Or tires.
Or tires. Or yeah, or tires is another big one, that I don't even know why we're picking up.
Yeah, it's like uh, uh, sometimes gas stations, you know, that do service on tires and so on, you know, they're good, sometimes they end up in the, I mean, I've heard that happening with other cities.
Right.
Yeah, and Anthony has been good, he, I got his number, he say, Bernice, if you see stuff that's been sitting there more than two weeks, call me. I called him, they pick it up, but I can't call him all the time, I'm.
Yeah, but when you're not calling someone else's, or I called them earlier about a pile that came to my attention, so he's getting calls all the time. And Anthony, yes, Anthony is jam up, I couldn't, we couldn't ask for a better guy to be over there, and he is overworked, Rick has to make him go home.
Well, that's what I'm saying, why are we the ones calling, why can't we have the residents call?
They do, they can, he gets more calls from residents than us.
And I think.
We gotta waving hand out there, Randy? Uh oh.
The, everybody's right, um, I've been saying this for two years, it's, the code enforcement's a problem. But it's not the problem in the city, it's the bulk garbage that is put out to the roads, to the curb side, there, you you you, I think everybody in here, I hate to say it's misinformed, there are no rules. There's a few things in code, but when everyone says, well, they put this out there, they put a, they put a toilet out there, they put a mattress out there, you have no ordinance that says you can't do that. You have no ordinance that tells you what, how much bulk you can put out every week, where I came from. Where I came from in Charlotte County, you got four cubic yards a week, you had, you had four to six tires a we, a a year, you had two white goods a year. Here, if you had a clean out in a rental place, here, we've worked, they put the whole house out to the roadway. Where every bit of thirty cubic yards, you get four, guess what, city's eating twenty-six, that's why we're behind, we're not behind because of of. Poor staff or not enough trucks, we're behind because of the amount of stuff that is put out to the roadside, there are no rules, everybody just drive around, it's the worst thing. I look at the trash before I look at the blight on the houses, and it's the stuff that's put out there, and Shelley's right, you got hurricane season coming. All those stuff become missiles, but I, last week, I did a, based on my knowledge from Charlotte, I gave Anthony. A list of stuff that needs to be considered plus three ordinances, I copied the city attorney on. Um, because I'm not the one that's gonna be drafting, it's not, I feel like I'm overstepping my bounds, um, because I'm code enforcement, I'm not solid waste, Anthony should be taking care of that in my mind. But it's not Anthony's fault, Anthony does work his butt off, Anthony's half the time on the back of a truck instead of supervising, because we're shorthanded, but we have to do something, we have to put. And not only that, once you do it, you're gonna have a problem of how you're gonna get the word out, because in Charlotte County, we had to hire a firm that went around and put door hangers on every house in Charlotte County. To let them know about the new rules, then they gave a three month of, basically a a timeframe where you had three months to come into compliance. So whether you send out something in the water bill that that tells people what to do, or or the new rules, you just can't roll them out without telling people. But there's gonna be a transition period, but right now, yeah, there's a few things in ordinance, you you know, that tells you when you, where you gotta store your can, it does not tell you, I I I implore anybody to show me an ordinance. Where you, it tells you what you can put out to those.
I'm gonna be working on that this week.
Right, but I, and I hope so, because that is the single most thing that'll clean the city up, and then that gives code enforcement tea. I have one of the year old clam drivers that is a code enforcement officer, Vinnie, the big rule, the and I laugh, it's two scoops. That's what you get, you get two scoops from the clam truck, now how am I gonna take that in front of a magistrate and they violate it, two scoop rule, they'll laugh at me and I'll I'll be embarrassed, so I have to have something with tea. So code enforcement can go behind when code, when one of these truck guys goes by and says, wait, there's way too much out there. It's not his responsibility to get out of that truck, take out a tape measure and try to figure out how many cubic yards, he's trying to get to the next spot, let us go out there, let us go out there, we'll measure it, I know, like, what is it, width time, length time, height divided by twenty-seven, that's how you get cubic yard. Okay, we'll go out there and then we'll cite the people, or we'll let Savitri or somebody know what the excess is, and if it's ten bucks an extra cube, whatever you decide how much an extra cubic yard is. You, then you charge them, but right now, we have construct, these total guts, they're throwing it right out to the roadside, they should be required to have a roll-off dumpster. After a certain amount, that's their responsibility, not the city's responsibility to pick up this stuff, and you're losing a lot of money, because it's trip after trip, when that guy's going out to the landfill, he's not picking up stuff in the land.
Yep.
So that that's, I'm off my horse.
All right, so what we learned here is that we're gonna have an ordinance brought to us next meeting, right?
Yes.
And we will tweak it as the council, along with our code enforcement and staff, and hopefully get something that's workable, then we can uh, have the fun journey of figuring out how to tell everybody about the new rules, so. Anything else? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.